...of the agenda where the board welcomes public comment from the audience. The protocol of this part of the meeting is for the board to receive input for consideration and not necessarily answer questions or provide feedback as a group at this particular time. Persons who wish to speak must first turn in a request to speak card. These cards will be accepted until the first speaker has completed speaking. When your name is called, please come to the presenters table and speak with a microphone. Speakers should state their name, address, and relationship to the district at the beginning of their comments for the public record. Each presenter is allotted up to three minutes. If the tone sounds complex, it should be concluded as quickly as possible. Finally, presenters who wish to leave, bring the materials for the board to give them to me. Other than these cards have you turned in at this time?
Muy buenas noches. Nos encontramos durante la parte de la orden del día donde la junta educativa le daba bienvenida a los comentarios del público. De propósito de esta parte de la reunión es para darle la oportunidad de dirigirse ante la junta educativa con algún comentario o información y no necesariamente para contestar preguntas o proveer información como grupo durante este tiempo. Aquellas personas que desean hablar deben llenar una tarjeta articulada en petición para dirigirse públicamente ante la junta educativa. Estas peticiones presentarán hasta que termine el primer orden. Y al escuchar su nombre, por favor, acerques a la mesa de presentadores y hable directamente al micrófono. Al comenzar su comentario debe decir su nombre, dirección, y su relación con el distrito para el registro público. Cada persona tendrá tres minutos para dirigirse ante la junta educativa. Escucharán una señal cuando su ciento termine y deberá incluir su comentario. Finalmente, las personas que desean dejar algún material por escrito para la junta educativa pueden dejarlo conmigo. ¿Alguien desea hacer un comentario?
Our first speaker is recommend me?
Good evening. I wanted to address a couple things tonight, one of which has to do with some comments that were made and opinions that were offered at the last meeting. And I would like to acknowledge the fact that we at least took a step in the right direction by one of the members who offered that we stay flat with the tax levy. Not that we would like to see, many of us wouldn't like to see something even better, but at least it's moving in the right direction. What I don't understand, and I can't help but being this comment out there, is why it was also necessary to do a, I mean, this was more than a bad handed compliment. This is, this is just kind of an insult to people who had been involved in addressing budgetary issues. That we, I think we were told that based on comments that have been heard, that it's quite clear that the public doesn't understand the process of budgeting and tax levying, which is really not true. You can hold whatever opinion you want. But this would be akin to me going back in my days when I was working for a very large insurer. And we had, we, either in an executive session or in a board meeting, let's say we're talking about a rate increase that's going to be done. And what's the likelihood that I would hear discussion about those stupid customers that don't understand what it is that we need to do? Because they just don't get the fact that we've done all these loss runs and we have this claim history and that we've got all the actuarial analysis in front of us, we've got underwriting requirements we have to meet, we've got, we've got new state restrictions we have to bring together. They just don't get, but they don't do that. And the reason why they don't do it is because they operate, want to make a profit, and they have to do that, they have to offer a value proposition. And I, so my question for you is, what is it that we, that this board remembers as the value proposition that they owe to the people of the district, the taxpayers, the students, and the parents? Another point that I wanted to address has to do with an article that was in the Examiner this past week, and it talked about the dual language addressing of the pledge allegiance. And I'll just say this, the, I know based on the input at the website, not the website, but Facebook, there's a lot of lively conversation about it. And I think the point that was lost in there is that the pledge allegiance is a, is a patriarchal that people offer. The state's not required that a student has to say it, but should they partake, that's the thought behind it. But you also, when you think about it, the pledge allegiance is not something that we say in a silent manner, we say to ourselves, we do it in unison. And the reason, one of the reasons why it's done in unison is because it is, it is something that, that builds unity. And so if we are saying it two separate times in two separate languages, or four separate times in four different languages, depending on the makeup of the class, what are we accomplishing? And so I think for a pledge, it'll be, it'll be very quick here, that is 31 words long, I think that would be a real good learning exercise for kids that are learning English to, to learn very quickly and be able to, you know, put that at the top of their list of what they know how to say, and understand what it means. Because most of us that have learned English, we probably didn't really fully grasp what the pledge meant when we were in kindergarten, first, second grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next speaker is Karen Carney.
I thought long and hard about what I wanted to say to you tonight, but I threw it all out. I just want to say nothing. The group that has been attacking all of you personally is nothing but a bunch of fools. They're part of the group that thinks that it's their right as a taxpayer to bully and disrespect you and staff. For all of your credit, you have refused to wallow in their mud. Keep up. You have a very hard job. You have to keep our school system running and continue to provide the best programs you can within the dollars you have for all 41,000 kids. And that's the hard part of the job. Another part of the job is to listen to the different opinions. Just remember that everyone is entitled to offer their opinion, but there's only one set of facts. You need to make your decisions based on facts, not opinions, or current political platforms. There's no room for politics in the school board or in the school district. You provide services for children, not workers. These children have a one-year opportunity at each grade level. Don't rob any child of a year through politics. If you sit on the U-46 Board of Education only to promote your political party, shame on you. You ran for the wrong office. School board seat should not be a stepping stone for one's political career. To those of you who've spent countless hours visiting schools and getting to know all the different programs that have improved U-46, the silent majority says thank you and I thank you. I know it's a tough job, someone will always be mad at you, but there's no reason to make such personal attacks. Read the silent majority are watching and paying attention to what's going on. Now, just one more topic, tax levy. Please remember that you not only are responsible for children who attend U-46 schools today, but you are also responsible to five for the children who will attend in the future. You have always looked at the big, you have to look at the big picture. Past boards have laid the ground for you to come with today. You have to make sure there's a ground for future boards and more importantly, future students.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, we have minutes of the board meeting, November 4, itemized bills, November 18, personnel reports, November 18, school maintenance project grant, DID, IS, wire oversight surveys, and McKinley Elementary window replacement project, number one, final replacement window systems.
Is there any item that any board member would like to know during the consent agenda? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of November 18, 2013? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bydlman?
Yes.
Mrs. Viall Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Skirber?
Yes.
Mr. Napoleonic Adam?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is discussion action. Report to the membership, do you want me to? Has everyone had an opportunity to look through all the resolutions? I'm just going to ask, since this is the second time we're talking about it, has anyone, is there any resolution that anyone has any question and would like to discuss? No? Yeah. Okay. So we all agree with the recommendations from IASD and administration?
Do we have alternate?
Now, I'm sorry.
Alternate delegate?
We need an alternate delegate. It's so funny. Maybe we could turn back. Okay, thank you, Maria.
Thanks, Maria.
Thanks, Maria.
How long does it last?
I think it's like 20 years.
All right, the next item is determination of the 2013 tax levy.
For this discussion, Mr. King, Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Burnish, Director of Financial Operations, who will review the revised determination of the 2015 tax levy and answer any board questions.
The revised levy amount is $265,535,209, or 2.99% higher than last year's extension of $257,825,854.80. It's a reduction of $4,527,000 from the $270,062,332 proposed levy at 4.75%, which was presented at the November 4th board meeting. The following steps are required when filing the tax levy. The Board of Education determines the amount of the levy at least 20 days prior to taking action on a particular levy. The tax levy must be filed with the county clerk's office by the last Tuesday in December. Administration recommends the board approve the determination of the 2013 tax levy and that the motion, second, and vote be entered into the minutes of the board meeting.
Some of the other reasons why we felt we couldn't go any lower than what we're proposing tonight is we've been getting overtures from the Illinois State Board of Ed that school districts should be prepared for a smaller proration next year on general state aid. This year that proration was 89%. Next year they're throwing out a number of 85%. If that were to come to fruition, that's another $5 million in decreased revenue. The other thing that's come to our attention over the past week after speaking with someone from our legislative, legislative branch, is that we may not get all of our categorical payments this year. We come out and directly say that, but some of the overtures that we were interpreting were that it may be difficult to make all those payments. Between the two of those, if we don't get both of them, that's a reduction of almost $12 million in revenue lost for our organization. It will be very difficult to balance a budget with that much revenue loss. So again, we come forward with a 2.99% proposed increase for next year.
Are there any questions?
The 1.7% is still there, the CPI.
Yes.
So the decrease from what we saw the last meeting until now is purely in the construction area?
It's really in the defensive portion of the levy that you're not going to get added on in case the estimates are off for new construction or for the total proration.
So did something change that we think there's less construction? Or what was reasonable, the decrease?
I think it was more so the perception of, for instance, it was a neighboring district that came out with a much higher proposed number in the teens. When we know that it'll be in the single digits, it's just a defensive piece to make sure we're covering the construction piece. I mean, we're asked to make assumptions and present to you and ask for approval on something that we don't have all the numbers for, and asking you to approve that, which you don't have those numbers for. You know, we make our best estimates based on the data we have right now, but we don't have all the pieces that we truly need to present to you in exact form.
If we approve this, the 1.7 is fixed.
Correct.
Everything else is a variable.
Correct.
And the estimation that changed from last meeting until this meeting.
Basically, what we did is try to tighten down as much as we're comfortable doing based on the data we have. I mean, that...
And the numbers don't, don't crystallize really until April.
Right, we don't, we won't be able to tell you exactly what those numbers are today after we get information back.
CPI, which hasn't changed, won't positively affect or reduce the burden of the current taxes. It's just that construction piece that changed.
So the information, is this new information since we were last meeting regarding our categoricals and the allocation?
Yeah, truthfully, it was over the weekend, late last week or over the weekend, that we were getting overtures from the state board that we may want to prepare budget-wise for a bigger proration. Now, again, I don't know if that's going to happen usually, but I'd say if the environment stays the way it is right now, there may be a likelihood that it happens.
And so it's been 89, and their essential getting is that it could drop to 85%?
Possibly.
Which would, translates again, is that the $5 million loss?
That's about a $5 million loss.
And any idea what the, about potential loss in categorical payments?
Any, each payment's about?
Yeah, the first quarter categoricals are about $7.4 million, and we're still waiting for those payments. So at the end of October, they owe us $7.4, and that's the same amount today. We haven't received any payments in November.
Do they determine the proration during the legislative session?
No, that's actually done by the state board. The state board does that based on, if I'm not speaking incorrectly, please correct me. I believe based on what they're allocated in the budget, then they determine what they can give the school districts.
And when does that happen, the proration?
We don't know that till the end of summer.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, we don't typically know that.
Last time, last year, we expected a proration of 85%. And then we changed it to a...
Yeah, it was actually about 82% when they were throwing out last spring.
81, 82, right.
Yeah.
Never answers, right?
They came back at 89, which is the same as the previous year.
Well, and I think the reason maybe they came back at 89 and we received the extra payment was, I believe it was publicized that the state collected additional revenue through the income tax piece, if I remember correctly.
And so is the sense that you're getting that we're going to only get a portion of the categoricals, or we're going to miss a quarterly payment altogether?
I am concerned even in the current budget we're operating under, we may miss a whole payment, which is going to be a potential problem even keeping this budget down.
And how, then, and the impact to next year's budget?
Well, then, we would come back next year and we would back off again and go back to three budgeted payments instead of four like we did this year. This is the first time in three or four years we budgeted all four. If they are, if we end up doing, getting short of one payment, I would say our recommendation would have to be back, go back to budgeting only three.
So I just want to make sure I'm following the money trail. We were anticipating $7 million additional dollars from the state.
Versus, yes, what we budgeted last year.
And now you're saying that there's potential that of the total amount, including the $7 million additional dollars, we'd only get 85%?
Those two pieces are two separate pieces. We have the general state aid piece, which is the piece that's prorated. So this year it's prorated at 89. There's, there was a newspaper article this last weekend that ISB's warning school districts, prepare your budgets for next year based, start looking at 85. Again, I don't know if that's going to happen, but that's what they're telling us. Like, as was just mentioned earlier, this year they were telling us 81, 82, all the way up until late summer, and then, oh, we're going to leave it at 89. So again, we probably won't really know that number until the end of the summer, just before we give you a final budget, probably. And then the categorical piece is the other piece. So we have two separate sources of really state funding, which is categorical, which is restricted, special ed, so on and so forth. And then the general state aid, which is, it's the categoricals we're talking about, we may not get all the payments.
Right, but it's the 85% that we may get prorated on general state aid, which is the additional $7 million, we're the additional $7 million.
So what happened was in March or April, when we submitted a tentative budget, we submitted a budget that said, we think we're going to get prorated at 82%. Then later in September, we came in and we said, no, well, the state now has assured us that they're providing...
89.
89%. And that's when you saw a difference in the revenue.
Right, that was one of the factors.
Well, okay. There was an increase for, because our poverty rate increased.
That's correct, that's true, okay.
And what was that? Well, let me ask this, how, how is that being impacted by the sense that we're getting?
Well, that, that'll all be part of the proration.
Okay, that's the question I probably wasn't articulating as well. That's what I was trying to get at. This additional money that we're anticipating as a result of our, of an increase in our poverty rate is part of what could get whacked by a lower proration.
It affects the...
Okay, that. And then, separate from that, there's a possibility of not receiving all of our categorical payments?
Yes. Again, I don't know all these factors with infinity, but I'd have to give you the information I have so you can make a decision based on what we have.
But what I need is, I, so these are disparate data points, and I don't have a really, and I know you don't either, but I, that's all I got. I need your best, you're the expert, I need your best guess at the likelihood of what you think's going to happen. Otherwise, I don't know how to vote because I'm just, you know...
But it is, it's going to be, it is a guess.
It is a guess, but I would like not it to be my guess, since I'm not a school finance expert, I would like it to be based off of not what Tracy Ellis knows about school finance, I'd like it to be based off of what Jeff King and the staff knows and the experts know about school finance.
I just think it's been really unpredictable, and I don't think we're the only district that's in a position of the, in a position to make, to be guessing.
I agree.
And we, we could make, because we've, we've made guesses in the past about what we thought the state was going to do, and it hasn't come to fruition. So I don't know that there is, there's such a thing as a good, I mean...
It's just the...
We try to make educated guesses based on information that we have, and, but there's also been like no historical pattern to base those guesses on either, because it's been really, I mean, I can't believe we got the fourth categorical last year. I'm shocked that we got it.
Right, and I, so I totally get that, and I, it's a whole nother conversation for another day of why this is the way school finance is. I don't, it defies anything that rational people would wrap their minds around. So, but that being said, this is what we have to deal with. So we all have to step into this irrational box and then try to figure out, and, you know. But I still, I'm not sitting out, nobody has asked Tracy Ellis to present on this tax levy or asked me to present on the budget, because nobody would listen to me because I'm not a school finance expert. And I'm not in a position to, so I'm asking for your guidance, I'm asking for what your thoughts are, because I have to make a decision, but I need to know what administration thinks. Even, and I know you're not, I'm not holding you to it, so next year I won't be coming back saying, Jeff, you said that we were going to get, I understand that.
So my, my opinion is if I had the budget to do over right now, I wouldn't budget for payments for categoricals. At this point, given the current environment, it's taken a step back from it, the state's, in my opinion, again, the state's financial position is no better now than it was last year for the year before. My opinion. So I guess if I had to do it over, I would be a little more conservative than we usually are. I wouldn't have budgeted all.
I love how IFB is giving this guidance after the budget had been...
Couldn't they have done that a week's ago?
Well, you know, the, the way the mechanics of it all work, I mean, the, the timing is frustrating, but we don't create the timing. And the, the timing of when certain decisions are made, we, we just know that, we, you know, we've done it long enough that we know, we have to hold out and not do certain things until we know that of a piece, especially if there's a lot of money on the table. Quite frankly, bringing a balanced budget forward this year without those categorical payments and without that GSA would have been very difficult to do. We'd have had to cut it pretty quick. So for us to sit here and say, yeah, we got all that extra money in general state aid, well, it would have been difficult to balance the budget without it. We were, we were already prepared to make cuts in numerous lines of the budget just to keep it balanced and bring a balanced budget forward. But we didn't have to make cuts in some of those areas that we thought we might, which was, which was probably a good result. But again, if I, if my opinion, if I had to do it over, I wouldn't have budgeted it all. I just, our opinion at the time was, it looked like the environment might be changing, so let's, let's feel a little more optimistic around that and put them in. We just have to wait and see. It's a, I can't pretend to know, again, if in July, we're going to, we're going to catch up after the tax receipts come in and the revenue, you know, that revenue piece is enough to take care of that piece, I will.
So when is the soonest we'll know, right now we're hearing that it might not, might not get as much as we had thought, when will that might not potentially become a will not? So when will we know we're not getting it? July, is that, is that the soonest?
Well, this past year they paid, in July they paid the fourth quarter, but we received those fourth quarter funds through the end of August, and we can agree those back in the prior year. So I mean, there's always the possibility through August that we could receive them.
But they're not going to tell us, they're not going to say...
You're not going to know.
We're not going to send this.
Right, you're not going to know. I mean, the best you can do is look at their payment pattern, it's, you know, estimate every three months, every quarter we should be getting some funds in. So if we don't receive the third quarter payment until June, then I probably wouldn't expect another payment until September. But I don't know that, because they don't have, they don't, they haven't had a payment pattern in the last four years, and it's, I end up with nothing at one day.
If we don't get that final payment, what are our alternatives?
Eventually, in the past, they have eventually paid it, but then it falls into the following fiscal year. So then we show a deficit in one year or, you know, deduction, so we don't have the revenue.
Are there any other questions?
I have 12 more questions, but I will answer.
Okay.
Mine are more philosophical, so go right ahead.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the determination of the 2013 tax levy?
Soon.
Any discussion?
So I guess, so I'm clear, what are we, so this is the determination of the levy, next we're the voter on the resolution of the levy? How do they differ, I mean, how does the determination differ from the resolution? I just have to conclude.
Well, the determination is the actual numbers, and the levy is then the resolution that supports those people and all that stuff, the legal process. I think that's all.
Yeah, the resolution will allow us to prepare the certificate of tax levy, which will be permitting later, the certificate will get filed, the county clerk's...
See, at this point, you're just looking for approval of your math, I mean, is it more than that?
No, it's approval of what we're going to actually file, because later in the meeting, that next document will be in front of you for approval as well, and that's what we have to file.
The actual document that we have to file then becomes something we have to look into.
The actual document that we have to file then becomes something we have to look into.
And then, in December, on December ninth, we'll be voting on...
Ultimately, I'm not here on some line of town, so I won't even have the ability to vote on the levy. But if I was, I'd be voting against it. So in good conscience, I can't vote on the resolution. I can't vote on the determination, and I turn around and vote no on the resolution. So I feel, you know, we need to do everything we can to keep the taxes flat for the residents. I believe the tax burden is high enough on the residents. So for that reason, I'll be voting against the tax levy, the resolution on the tax levy and the determination of the tax levy.
Any other discussion?
And I think that we ought to keep the tax burden flat as well, but apparently, the state of Illinois doesn't feel that way. And the state has determined that if you buy a home or a piece of property in Illinois, you are going to fund the school district, and whether the state funds it or not. And I would never intentionally put this school district and the children who come through this school district in harm's way. Never. Everybody pays taxes, and I have yet to hear somebody go, "Ooh, ooh, ooh, please raise my taxes." Nobody likes it. And I'm struggling, and I have put more due diligence into this single issue probably than almost any other issue, on a single issue, since I've been on the board. And I'm struggling to figure out a way to fund the operations of this district and meet the needs of the students, and yes, the staff as well, meet the operations of this district in such an insane environment, such an insane matrix that we have to work in. And while some think they have a full grasp on how all this schools and end stuff works and may in fact have it, I'm quite positive that the general public, most people, don't understand it. And it's unfortunate that they don't, because I think that if more people understand... Here's how I'm sure they don't understand it. Because if more people understood exactly how this worked, people wouldn't tolerate this nonsense. You wouldn't tolerate it. If you understood it, you would be in front of your legislators demanding a change. But instead, people show up to the school board demanding a change, and this is not where the change should start. Not on the backs of these kids. As sickening as it makes me, and it does make me sick, I'm gonna support this nonsense, because the state decided that they left us no other way. And they can just... We do budgets without numbers from them. They pay if they wanna pay. They pay what they wanna pay, when they wanna pay, how they wanna pay it, no advance notice, nothing. And we cannot function that way, and the state of Illinois has said it's on the backs of the taxpayers. And if I have to lay it on the back of somebody, I won't lay it on the back of kindergarteners and third graders and eighth graders and twelfth graders. So I feel boxed in and constrained to support this. But it's really weighs very heavy on me, and I don't sleep while they're talking about it.
Any other discussion?
I have to agree with that answer. I would like to disagree with the gentleman that spoke earlier, who said he thought that everybody knew what was going on here. I brought this to my Bible study Sunday night. Not one person... And they are all very intelligent people. Not one person there had even half a grasp of what has... What this system looks like. So explaining it to them, unfortunately, took up most of our time in Bible study, and so we didn't get a lot done. But we did pray about it, and I did go back and forth, and until this morning, I didn't have any answers either. I have to agree. This is an insane system, and all I feel like I have in way of power is to pray about it. And what kind of system is that, when you're elected to an office and you've got nothing else? That all you've got left is to pray about it? This is nuts.
At first, I have to say a couple things. I wanna thank Jeff Key, when you stay on your scalp, for bringing the reduction and the proposed levy from the last meeting to this meeting. I realize that's not a flat levy, but I do appreciate the reductions that you already put in there, and you made it clear that it's the most you can possibly think to reduce, and I can appreciate that. And as much as I don't wanna raise taxes on anyone, I also know that this is the system we have to work with, and it pains me to vote yes in that regard, because taxpayers will feel this burden. But I also know that the real solution is fundamental education funding reform. And I feel strongly, and I've said this to other folks, I'll say it over and over again, that this board needs to be looking at that. Well, we may not make a decision regarding that. It's our legislators. We do... We are the leaders of the second largest school district in the state, and we need to be looking at that more actively, whether it's hiring a lobbyist, whether it's getting the public behind a specific piece of legislation. Whatever it is, we need to be putting our efforts toward that, because the time is ripe for fundamental reform. It's not going to happen without leadership, and I think this board could be a leader, and that's what we need to be looking at. I hate the idea of raising some taxes, but I also don't wanna undercut our children. I don't wanna undercut the teachers who are performing. You know, they're lead... They're teaching our children, and I don't want to pull the rug out from under them. So I appreciate this reduction. I will be voting yes, but I strongly feel that we need to be looking at fundamental reform, and we need to be active with our legislative body.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Nunez?
Yes.
Ms. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Bolletto?
No.
Ms. Nolan? Mrs. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bydlman?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
So approved six.
Our next item is the resolution regarding the proposed 2013 levies. Gentlemen.
Hi, yeah. The resolution has also been updated with changes that are in the determination of the 2013 tax levy. Administration recommends adoption of the proposed levy resolution.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution for the proposed 2013 levies?
One more second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Bolletto?
No.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroeder?
Yes.
Ms. Bydlman?
Yes.
Ms. Nunez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Six, one, approved.
Any other business? Board member updates?
I just wanna say that I attended Cinderella at least in the last week, but what I really wanted to say was, you were there. And I have been in many... At many events across this district, basketball games, football games, plays at pretty much every school where I've seen you. And I just appreciate your presence and visibility in those places. And what I really appreciated was, every time I see you in a place like that, you're always talking to students, and they always know who you are. And they're always, "Dr. Tate, Dr. Tate, Dr. Torres." And, you know, in particular, as a parent in this district, I appreciate that you have that presence and visibility with students. And it was a good reaction.
This past week, I went... I attended the special education program on Wednesday at... Here at Central High, and it was for parents about IEPs. And it was just a really great program. They had ninety registrants, which was, I think, tripled from last year. And I just think the special ed committee is doing a great job. They really are.
They have them. They're years.
Yeah.
Really working on that.
I wanted to say thank you to the special ed committee for putting that on. It didn't get to go to this one, but it was originally on my agenda. It just didn't work out that way. But I also wanted to say I'm sorry that I couldn't make the CAC meeting. There was a lovely concert at Elton High, or the choir, and my kids are in the choir, so I had to... But otherwise, I would never miss the CAC meeting.
I went to the CAC meeting, because I was the board member at night, but I also wanted to hear the presentation on Common Core was much different than what we received here. It was much more detailed, gave a lot of really good information. It was probably twenty, thirty minutes in length, or so. It was a very thorough job that they did. You know, here, we're kept to a minimum, because there's a lot of things on our agenda. So I do think a lot of people got their questions answered after that, which was great. I also went to the open house for our new old radio station. And it was very exciting. There were lots of kids there that were really anxious for things to get rolling and actually already have been rolling. So just very excited to see that we're utilizing that space again and giving kids an opportunity to explore that area, because it is one of those things that's kind of like, you know, the dream of broadcasting or things like that, what they actually get to do. And it was really cool.
So two things. The first is, I try to use my time wisely, because I'm really super busy and I avoid taking on stuff. As a matter of fact, as of the end of this year, I'm gonna be getting out of some stuff. But one thing, when I take something on, I'm like a rabid dog about it. And so this tax levy thing has awakened the rabid dog in me. And I concur with Veronica. We're the second largest district in Illinois, and I don't think that we should be passive about demanding changes and that we ought to have a voice. And I don't know, maybe we've been, and I'm just not aware of it. But I need to know from staff what all of our options are. Like I said, I don't believe that the general public, most people know, because most people wouldn't put up with this. Some of the stuff I see people complaining about to legislators would fall by the wayside if they knew this stuff. I honestly believe that. And especially, well, I won't belabor that point, but I do agree that we need to take more of a leadership role, and so I would like to see some information coming back from administration as to a recommendation, you know, up to and including hiring a lobbyist. Anything else to get me going?
Well, I was wondering, the CAC, the finance committee, in the past, they did like a really amazing job preparing...
Where the legislative?
Well, they did it with the finances.
Yeah.
They did it... They did an F eight, you know, they prepared an F eight key to document that they continue to update, and it was really... Like they... I don't know what the status of the finance committee is in CAC this year, but they did an amazing job of putting... Putting all that information into layman's terms. And... But I actually served on the finance committee when they first were starting to do that. But I don't know that they've ever really tackled the, "Do you understand the tax levy? And do you understand your property taxes?" And so that might be a vehicle to do that, too. And also, you know, our legislative committee has certainly done an outstanding job in the past through CAC lobbying and change that really brought a lot of money to the district. So I mean, those might be two avenues to explore.
That's fine. I'm willing to carve out time for whatever influence as a board member. I need to go to Springfield. I just need direction and suggestions from administration, but I don't feel like I'm gonna let this drop. So it's now my rabid dog.
If I can help, I'd like hearing that with you.
Well, American people will do, Jennifer. Thank you. The second thing is, someone mentioned the Facebook page, and I wanted to talk about that a minute. So thank you to Tony and administration for putting out rules about the Facebook page. It was disgusting. The comments on Facebook page. They were vile. They were racist. And then they showed some... I don't know, people have plant in chip... Or chip implants in them or whatever, that they can just look at somebody and tell who's undocumented and who's not. Just look at 'em and determine that they're undocumented. And then you show ignorance when you refer to them as illegal aliens. It was horrible. It was just horrible. And for our students who are on that page to be able to see this, and we demand better behavior from teenagers, when the adults are acting horribly in racist manners, and then get offended. And yes, I'm calling them out, because then you get... You have the nerve to be offended when someone calls you a racist. If it acts like a duck, and looks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, I'm gonna call it a duck. You wanna call yourself a swan, go right ahead, but the rest of us can see you're really a duck. And so I will be the first one to push administration to shut that page down. If you wanna be racist, and you wanna call out people and say all kinds of horrible things about the people in this community, about our students and their parents, I can't stop you, but I certainly don't have to give you a district-sponsored platform to do it with. So either the Facebook page is going to be at a level... We can disagree. There are plenty of people that I disagree with and who disagree with me, and I'm okay with that. I go to court every day. Everybody disagrees with me. I always have opposing counsel trying to rip me apart. That's fine, but we're gonna do it respectfully, and we're not going to evolve into... Or devolve into calling people names and being racist with it. Otherwise, you'll have to take it to your personal Facebook page, you take it to your email, but you won't do it on a district-sponsored Facebook page. That, I promise.
Thank you. Thank you for telling me that.
Anything else?
So the only other thing I guess I would add on the tax levy is, while we're talking about funding and taking some leadership on that, I guess I'd like to take us to take a more of a leadership and an active role in the spending and looking at spending and making sure it's got a good return on investment, whether it's reducing costs within the district or it's improving results in the classroom. You know, I'd like our own finance committee, the board's finance committee, to spend more time looking at those things on the next annual round of the budget process.
Just a couple of things. One, that our business civic... Business and civic leadership advisory met last Friday. We have thirty-five business leaders, including civic nonprofit agencies, for two mayors and two other mayors, actually, from our eleven communities, send representatives, and total of thirty-five attendees in our first advisory in terms of renewing that one. So that was really exciting. And actually, on the next day after the Cinderella, I went to Harvard, where they did a complete words of William Shakespeare.
Oh, wow.
Before intermission. And they actually did handle this second part of intermission. And they did it three times, actually, fourth time, the last time backwards. So it was hilarious. Caesar, anything?
Well, Ms. Gerber got some knowledge of Cinderella, but other than that, it was a wonderful weekend.
Sorry, Caesar. Caesar, you gotta jump in there.
Yeah?
I just wanna add one thing. You had talked about the finance committee. Once they start the budget process again, there will be finance committee meetings more often, and we do take part in a lot of that stuff. So as the budget cycle goes through, I mean, it can always be adjusted. Ask questions, you know, those type of things. Okay? All right. Other business, CAC.
Under other business, we have October financial reporting. Mr. Brunn is here to review the reporting and answer any more questions.
Our total fund balances as of October thirty-first are two hundred twenty-nine million, nine hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-one, which is a twenty-six million dollar decrease from the September thirtieth fund balances. During the month, we received four point six million in property tax payments. We also received only six hundred... We also received only six hundred thousand from the state for category R holes. The amount that the state owes is seven point four million, and as I stated earlier, we have not received any additional payments in November, so that amount is still a seven point four million. For federal funds, we received three point two million. Our revenue is eight point seven percent higher than last year at this time, and our expenditures are four percent higher than last year, but in line with the budget. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
I know I asked this last time, and I can't remember what you said. What kind of stupid, but, um, total dollars encumbered, what was it?
Encumbered, this, there are open purchase orders.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And that category of payment is from when? Was due when?
The payments that we received for the early childhood program, they're making some monthly payments for those of three hundred thousand a piece, so it looks like, I think, it was July ninth.
Okay, so this seven point four million dollars?
Seven point four, basically, from the first quarter, from the last September. The payments that they set up there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our next item is the, on the work session, is the amendment to the 403B plan to accept rollovers into the plan, and Ms. Mel Maitel assists us with human resources, and Jeff King is here as the event board, who wasn't able to make a decision.
Thank you. The amendment that we have in front of you will allow employees and recently retired employees who already participate in the U forty-six 403B plan, the ability to roll funds into the plan from another qualified retirement plan. The most common type of rollover request into our plan usually is recently retired employees that want to roll their ERO free funds into the plan right as they retire, or new hires that come to the district who want to roll their present from another area of 403B account balances into the U forty-six plan. And the district's third-party administrator, the CPI, is responsible for ensuring that the funds being rolled into the plan are truly coming from another qualified plan, so we do have that protective piece in place, and they keep that, keep us in compliance. The IRS did open this up and allows rollovers into the 403B plan, but the district just needs to amend the plan to allow it for the 403. We already do this for our 457 plan. So it's, this change will just make plans consistent across the board.
Questions? Is there that much, or, I'm sorry, what already allows it?
The 457 plan, already, we already allow that to roll over.
And what's the 457?
It's a, another retirement piece.
It's an additional retirement vehicle for public employees, other than 403B is very similar to the 401K. We also have access to what they call 457s, the IRS number.
Should be either or, or and?
Well, you could do either or. You could, it's both and. Typically, what an employee will do is max out the 403, then put the rest in the 457, protective retirement.
Which employees are eligible for? All employees are eligible for either one. It might be either one, but it's, it's not a certain group of employees.
If they're saving it, they can put it there.
But this is all their contribution.
I did.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our next work session is the 2013 tax levy certificate and resolution, and Mr. Bell Brennan will join Mr. Jeff King.
The tax levy certificate is the final draft of the levy amounts that will be filed with the county clerks. The certificate must be filed by the last Tuesday in December. Administration recommends the board adopt the certificate of tax levy.
Are there any questions? Okay, tax levy resolution?
The tax levy resolution is an annual resolution needed to allow administration to file the certificate of tax levy. The resolution and certificate of tax levy are filed with the county tax extension offices and must be filed by the last Tuesday in December, and administration recommends the board adopt the tax levy.
Okay, this is the one that we vote on on the night?
This will be, right, this will be for action on the December ninth.
Okay.
Both, right? There's two more votes on the night, so we'll break up a separate vote.
Right, the certificate has one and the resolution. There's two votes.
Any other questions?
Keep talking about this all night long.
Okay, next item, work session.
Our next item is a work session bids, proposal for plan operations, district-wide electric power supply services. Mr. Sparks will join Mr. King along with Mr. Javits. So Mr. Sparks is the Director of Business Services, and Mr. Javits is Director of Plan Operations.
Our proposal this evening is required in electric power supply services. Administration requests an authority to enter into electric service purchase contract, currently out of our contract for electric service with Mid-America Energy, which expires in February two thousand fourteen for all district buildings. A list of four qualified electric suppliers. Companies have been compiled, the supplier companies are Constellation New Energy, Antares Energy, Mid-Am Energy, and Merit Red Energy. Since the price fluctuation occurs on a daily basis, it is imperative to order district to lock and price on the same day that the price posted provide. Therefore, administration recommends the board enter into a service contract for electric service on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. Clam the board approval and turn your review. Administration requests price books from four electric supplier companies and will enter into a contract to lock and allow its price. This expense recharge in operation needs, but...
So this is a little bit different than what the board's used to seeing, for those of you who have not been on the board as long as some of the others. With a utility contract, the pricing is only good till three P.M. the day they give us the price. So that's why you're seeing four vendors being brought before you, and that's what we'll ask you to approve it in December ninth. And then the next morning, we will go out and request pricing from all four. So in essence, what we're asking you to do is approve of myself or designee to sign, enter into the contract once we have the pricing the next day. Because once they give it to us, like I said, we only have till three P.M. to either enter into the agreement or not. So we can't bring to the board under this structure, we can't bring you who the final vendor's going to be.
And then take two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, that's just not the way it's set up. It's the same way with the natural gas contract that we will also have to do within this next year. The pricing is usually only good for the same day.
We are actually approving to allow you the authority to make the decision.
Right. We vetted the vendors, there were actually seven that applied. We vetted it down to these four, and this is the same process we followed the last time we did this, three or four years ago, I believe. And then if you approve of me signing into the agreement, then, as I mentioned, on December tenth, then we will go out, request pricing, and then out of these four, whichever is the lowest bidder on that day, we'll enter into that agreement, then we'll come back to the board, and we'll inform you of our rate and which vendor we are entering into agreement.
You mentioned seven, I see four, and two that were declined. Is there another one that I'm missing?
I'm missing.
Oh, I see, so, okay. And so did we not even invite Commonwealth Edison? I doubt that they give a low.
Commonwealth.
Oh, you're right. There it is. You're right. It is Commonwealth. So, and actually, it looks like they do it, some aggressive rates.
We, we compiled a list of all the, what they call, local area marketers that provide services for, for that company, and we have twenty-one vendors listed that can provide. We send them a questionnaire, and some of the questions was, do we do business with, some of them only do with industry or some special, and also how many years they license to provide services. And based on that, we identified eight vendors. We sent to them specific specs and bids, and only six replied. So we went to, all of them basically, well, could provide service.
It looks like one of the deal breakers, and it probably makes sense that it'd be a deal breaker, is in no single billing. So if they couldn't consolidate, then they're going to send us some forty-odd bills.
That was quick.
In the coming night here.
Yes.
That's a quick deal breaker for a couple of months.
I don't have any experience with any of these companies except for Ameren, but not on a commercial level. But on a residential level, they're horrible, and I've actually made a little bit of money going after them on behalf of clients in southern Illinois. So, I mean, I'm sure we're going to go with whoever's got the best rate on whatever the date is, January twenty-eighth, and I just hope Ameren Energy for us, since we're the big, you know, ninety-pound gorilla in the room, I hope they treat us better than they do residential customers.
We dealt with some of them in the past, very good experience. We have very tight contracts that have been finalized by our attorneys. There's no waiver room. We do it, I'm doing it for almost fifteen and a half years here. There's not much room, and they really, really want to work with us.
They really want to work with us.
And they bend you sometimes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Our final work session is change orders. I'll go ahead and identify both of them. Highland Elementary Fire Alarm System Replacement, number one, final, associated electrical contractor day. And Larkin High Domestic Water Piping Replacement, number one, final, Northwest Contractors Dank. And Mr. King and Mr. Javits are here to explain to the city board.
The administration recommends approve the change order to amount of minus twelve thousand seventy dollars for handling the maintenance of our system replacement.
Are there any questions? Okay.
The administration recommends approve the change order in the amount of minus under forty dollars, fourteen cents for Larkin High School Domestic Water Piping Replacement.
Any questions?
Just a comment, any nice billing? Predicting, maybe forty dollars or not a million dollars.
Well, it was tight, and it was very tight.
Okay, thank you. That being the last item, could I have a motion to adjourn?